We're all set. I want to call to order here. Can I get a motion to go into session for regular public meeting?
So move.
Thank you, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. First order of business is to stand and give pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a moment of silence, please. Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, just a few announcements here. Wanted to, first of all, just, there were two events that happened since our last meeting. One was Juneteenth and the other was the Fourth of July. And I just, I think both of those events went very well. So just wanted to thank the organizers of those with the Juneteenth. That was the African American Heritage Committee, particularly the efforts of Trina Brown Hicks. So I just wanted to say that was, I thought, went really well. Thanks to Chief and the arrangement that his folks did and staff and all that for Juneteenth and also for Fourth of July. So particularly with, starting with the Children's Games, Ron Krajewski stepped up and organized those again. He got some sponsorship from the Order of Red Men. And we'd like to thank Mike DiPaolo for his efforts in serving as MC that day. I thought it was well done and we kept reminding people of the other events that were coming. And again, for Chief Spell, I think he made a appearance with Crime Dog, or McGruff. Yeah, not Fred McGriff, but McGruff the Crime Dog. Yeah. And then moving on, you know, to the Boat Parade, the Freedom Boat Club had sponsored that. That was well attended, as well as the Doodah Parade, which is a longstanding tradition. Again, thanks for the organization. And then finally, the Go Forth folks who helped put on the fireworks. And again, I think no issues to report. Is that right, Chief? Everything went smoothly, no one was injured, all that. So let's start with that. So that's appreciated. This week, I want to announce that there are quite a few, in the next coming weeks, quite a few committee meetings. So starting tomorrow, is it tomorrow you have the ad hoc? Is it now?
No, it got moved to Thursday.
Okay, Thursday. Short Term Rental Committee, also on the 14th, H Park. We got an LPC meeting. On the 15th, we have the first of our tree ordinance meetings on the 18th. Am I reading my eyesight here?
Yes.
Annexation Committee on the 15th, right? Is that right? There is also Parks and Rec Committee on the 18th, a special Lewis Planning Commission meeting on the 19th. And Janelle, can you recall? That's all in the priorities?
Yes.
Okay, so that's to go through the priorities for the special meeting. The others will be posted, seven days posting for these meetings. So the agendas will start to make their way off. But there's a 20th Planning Commission meeting, a 21st African American Heritage Committee will have, depending on whether we vote to go forward with them tonight or not, although we have a workshop scheduled for the 28th, as well as the Public Arts meeting on the 28th evening. So additionally, I wanted to make note that this week, there is, the Lewis and Bloom is participating in American Bloom competition. So be on your best behavior and, you know, take care of your yards and all that. There's also county council meetings tomorrow, but the normal schedule, it's 1:15. They had an odd time tomorrow starting. And then I had here that there's a planning and zoning on, I believe, the Thursday this week as well. The tennis and pickleball courts will be out of commission for the next 30 days. I'd encourage you to try out the Cape and Looping Courts there, maybe. Take the Lewis Line there.
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I don't know if there's anyone else. I also want to thank the state legislators, particularly Ernie, Steve, and Pete. We had pretty generous awards coming out of the bond bill that we'll be able to use for various city initiatives within the parks and things like that. So thanks to those guys. Anything else from the table? At the rental meeting? Yeah, okay. All right. So in terms of, if there's no other announcements, there will be one deletion from the agenda this evening. That has to do with I-5, which was a discussion for designated parking on, for 117 and 119 Front Street. So that will come off tonight and we'll take that up at another meeting. So getting into, need to be taller, coming closer here. All right. So that has to do with the additions and deletions to the agenda. The next are proclamations. And the first one we have is one for our Parks and Rec. So pull that up. Get these out, too.
Yeah, this is some bigger.
Okay. So this is, this is actually a designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. So respected Janet Reeves, our Parks and Rec Commissioner, Director. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including Lewis, Delaware. And whereas our Parks and Recreations are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through its increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, and provides vegetative buffers to the development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Lewis, Delaware recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources, resolved, I, the Mayor, Andrew Williams of Lewis, Delaware, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set here to that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Lewis, Delaware. So thanks for all of our Parks and Commissioners and those that do all the hard work to make sure that we have the quality parks that we do. And that includes our friends, Lewis and Bloom, who are participating in American Bloom. So keep that in mind this month. The next one actually is, again, quite important for our community, and that has to do with honoring our seasonal employees. And we do that each summer. We're about halfway through, and we are fortunate, as you know, to be able to not only have a parking enforcement, but also are, we were having an issue in beginning of season with lifeguards, and we were able to pull that together as well. So whereas the City of Lewis is a coastal community that experiences increased seasonal residents and visitors during the summer seasons, and due to the fluctuation in population, the city relies on seasonal, summer employees to meet the needs of the community. And whereas the seasonal employees can be found in all aspects of city operations, including beaches, marine operations, building and street maintenance, parking enforcement, administration, and whereas the efforts of these employees significantly contribute to the constantly or consistently outstanding service provided by the cities to our residents and visitors, I, the Mayor, Andrew Williams of Lewis, on behalf of the citizens of Lewis, extend our most sincere appreciation to the following individuals who were employed by the City of Lewis during the summer of '22. So I'm going to read these out, because I think, you know, largely due to the nature of being seasonal, we don't have too many opportunities to extend our appreciation. So in our parking enforcement, I do see Dennis is here, and he's the supervisor of our parking enforcement. And along with Dennis, we have William Ash, Robert Castana, Gary Eckenrod, Gabor Kitka, Judy Sealan, Timothy Smith, who's noted here, shared with the Lewis Line, and also Kenneth Winters. So thanks to those folks in the parking enforcement. For seasonal maintenance, I'd like to thank Lance Kaufman, Christopher McLean, Joseph McLean, Joshua Melendez, and Thomas Reeves. Thank you. For the Marine Operations, we have John Lafferty, who's our Dockmaster, as well as Marcus Gramofsky, who is an Assistant Dockmaster. On the administrative side, we have Blue Jade, as well as Zelly Mendez, Melendez. Lewis Line, this summer, we have Garland Ayers, Joseph DeCilis, Linda Dogne, Amanda Heon, Robert Kiefer, Charles Lampkin, Mark Letty, and Earl Schlegel. That was the Lewis Line. And for lifeguards, we have our Captain Matthew, we know him as Strom Edwards. Mark Woodard is our Chief. Robert Luxick is the EMT. Caleb Brady, Grayson Donahue, Christopher Gardner, James Hyde, Landon Hudson, Paul Hutt, Jason Low, Dylan Low, Brady May, Victoria May, Amelia Meyer, Sabrina Nosher, Stella Pogwist, Nathaniel Taylor, and Coleman Woodard. So thanks to all those seasonal employees. As noted, it would be difficult to run this city like ours without that assistance. So appreciate that and all give a hand for all the season. Okay. I also, E3, I'd like to announce the city employee of the quarter. But I think we have, is it two? Do we actually have two city employees of the quarter? And I don't see either of them here, but.
I don't think either are here.
I'm going to go off the top of my head. I think it was Sue, is it Sue Ann? And also Allison Kirk as well, from our Billings Department. So again, that's all voted on by their peers. So I think that's particularly noteworthy to receive an award like that when it comes from your peers. So congratulations. I assume it comes with some type of, something beyond just recognition. Yeah, so congratulations on that. And then I might need Janelle's help on this, because I'm not recalling here. Appointment of the members of the Planning Commission to the Joint Site Development Ad-hoc Review Committee. Do you recall who their appointments are for this?
So this is a member of council.
Okay, so we are looking to appoint someone here?
Yes.
Do we need one or two?
Just one, because they're going to chair the meeting. They don't vote. It's just they chair the meeting and run the meeting.
Okay.
And it's for a six-month term.
Don't all jump at once.
And it's only as needed.
Okay. You know, the former took this on before. I'm happy to do it if others find, you know, I know that everyone's taking on, you know, a heavy load as it is, so, you know, if you want to.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, well, you got to nominate someone then.
I'll nominate the mayor. I second the nomination.
Oh, boy. Great, all right.
And they're free to just walk the station.
Sounds good. Okay, so I got a second and a motion in a second? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, I guess it's me. All righty. The next one down is consent agenda. And I didn't want to, I don't know that anyone wants to pull anything from here as such, but I did want to give Austin the opportunity to present on the half of BPW, the less than upcoming meetings or any, anything upcoming with BPW that you might want to share with us.
So I'm probably going to steal Ann Marie's Thunderbolt Construction, but.
Okay.
So Piletown Road, they're finishing the abandonment of the 6th to the 10th. They have a couple hydrants they got to take out, and they got to do flowable fill. That's all per Dell Dot. They got to finish trench repair, and then final mill and pave is scheduled for next Monday. So that will start the 18th. And then for Donovan's Road, we have a little bit of restoration that needs to happen. Stormwater pipe that needs to be replaced for Dell Dot. It was damaged during construction at Central Avenue. And then mill and pave. As far as construction, that pretty much rounds out any projects. We have our board meeting, which I believe is the 27th.
27.
Yeah.
Okay. So the Piletown Road you were referring, that's the mill and overlay will start the 18th. So you likely have done that following, like, that week?
As long as you get four good days, I think it will be done that week.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Yeah, weather dependent.
And that goes from New Red all the way up to the Dairy Property, is that correct?
Just beyond the Dairy.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, awesome.
Yep.
So I assume, as I said, I didn't know that anyone wanted to pull anything outside the consent agenda, otherwise I'll take a, take a motion to receive the.
I actually have a question.
Sure.
And this one goes to the chief. Are you prepared? The question, and this has to do with your police report. And just for clarification or enunciation, I noticed that there was a accident Savannah rode in the bike trail. And involved the Delaware State Police. Yes. Was, that was, was anyone seriously injured there?
No, it was a minor accident. It was handled by the Delaware State Police, because it occurred just outside the city jurisdiction.
They responded, and we didn't?
We responded and assisted. That's why you see it on the assist other agency portion of the report, but we did not handle it. It occurred outside the jurisdiction.
But there was no fatality associated with that?
No.
That's good. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. And I would also like to make a notice that the minutes that are included, we have February 14th, March 14th, and April 11th. I suggest that they are in good order and that we should approve them as prepared.
Okay. So having said that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Before we move into Ann Marie's report, I did neglect, there are, I want to acknowledge the folks who are attending online. So it looks like there's about 10. Is that right, Blue? We got Alejandra, Alejandro Fuentes, Frankie Bradshaw, Laura Haskett, Marty Thompson, Mark Dunkle, Rick, Robin Davis, and Tom Panetta, and a couple anonymous there. So I would, I would mention, for those online, we will have at the end, there is a public comment period, and we'll look to limit that to about two or three minutes. It's, there may not be any response from the council at that point, but you're welcome to comment or suggest things for a future meeting. You can comment on things that we've spoken about tonight or make suggestions for a future meeting, but that is, as it says, is for your chance to comment. We may respond or we may not. Okay, so Ann Marie, you have our manager's report. Blue, can you, could you bring that up for the audience, please?
All right.
Thank you.
So picture of our summer concert series. Don't forget every Tuesday evening. I'm sure it will rain every Tuesday evening. So that's our, that's our condition, but this one picture, it didn't. So we can go to the first slide. So I'm not going to belabor what Austin's already said, but we are finishing up the design work by we, I mean, GMB, on the Monroe Railroad Adams Avenue project, and that will go to bid with a, hopefully, I think, a November start. Let me get to the next one. Site work has continued at Lewis Waterfront Preserve. They've begun application for building permits for the initial pack of houses that will include the model. We also have Otis Smith and Schley Avenue parking lots, which we are waiting for some final information, and then they will be going out to bid again with the anticipation of starting construction following the summer season. Departmental operations, we had six new building permits, new home permits. Most of the permits, again, were renovations, which is pretty consistent. But six new homes is a high number for us in a month. You know, trash, always exciting. Again, we did start June 30th, the second weekly collection. So I know we had quite a bit of trash pickup, trash and recycling over the first weekend in the Fourth of July weekend. So recreation permits, we are definitely in bonfire season with 105 bonfire permits issued in June, 18 park use permits, nine outdoor amplifications, 10 weddings. So it's, you know, as you see, our, we get much more heavily utilized as the weather gets nice.
Are these consistent with last summer's numbers?
You know what? I think what I'm going to start doing is putting the, kind of like we do with the trash. So I'll make sure we do that next time.
Okay.
And I can actually amend this and put it up online that way. With our new beach patrol, one of the things we decided we wanted to start tracking was their activity. So we've had during June, 25 rescues, 12 lost children, and 19 medical, so.
I assume the children were found.
Yeah, yes. I sure hope so. Yes, they were. Okay, good. Thank you, Janet. And then, business licenses. We had 36 new business licenses and eight new rental licenses. And then here's the one I get really excited to watch, which is the Lewis Line. We had 979 passengers in the month of June. As you can see, Cape May Lewis Ferry and Second and Market Streets continue to be the big volume stops. But, you know, people are hopping on and off just about any place along the route. So that's good. And with July, we will be able to see how the high school fares in that as well. And I know Ellen Lorraine and I briefly looked at the numbers for Fourth of July weekend, and we did have people picking up at, at the, at the high school. On June 8th, we held an orientation for members of the city's commissions, committees, and boards. So that included FOIA training, code of conduct training, training on the city's anti-harassment and anti-bullying policies, but also just some general tips for successful committee meetings. It was recorded and it's available to the general public, if you're really that interested, but also as new members come onto the boards and commissions. On June 7th, the Parks and Recreation Commission held a public workshop on the master plan for Great Marsh Park. It was very well attended. Staff spent a good bit of the second part of June making plans for the holiday weekend and everything that goes along with it. And again, the second weekly trash collection started on June 30th. Mayor Williams and I participated in a discussion convened by John Kane of Senator Harper's staff to discuss BTR replenishment and the requirements for public access that are associated with federal funding. We actually have a meeting coming up with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss BTR replenishment as it relates to Lewis. And one of the things we want to talk about is specifically the area that's eligible for the federal funding for replenishment. So that's, that'll happen this month. On June 17th, the mayor and I met with representatives from Harbor Point to discuss the benefits of annexation. So the community is fully built out at this point, and it's been turned over to, their assets have been turned over to the HOA, and they are trying to determine if it's in their interest to, to petition the city for annexation. On June 27th, staff from multiple city departments met with residents of Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park to discuss city services and to hear concerns that they, they have in the community that could need attention. City staff also has a meeting with the new park manager later this month. So we are trying to keep a strong relationship with both the community and the park management. And the Short Term Rental Ad-hoc Committee met on June 28th. They'll continue to meet twice per month and hope to have recommendations to mayor and city council by September. And then Mayor Williams and I had a meeting with Denrec and Dell Dot regarding a flood study that the two agencies recently completed for Piletown Road in the vicinity of Canary Creek. So we expect that to be on the July 28th workshop agenda, if in fact council continues the workshop. We continue, continued the negotiations with Teamsters for the renewal of the collective bargaining agreement for the police. So that's June in a nutshell.
I have a question. Sure. Was there anything substantive that came from the meeting that you had with Dell Dot and Denrec with respect to the Piletown Road?
Yes. Yeah, so that they are looking at options for raising the road.
At the bridge or farther down?
Farther down to, it would begin approximately at College Drive and, and go to the bridge. Well, just, okay, so.
College Drive.
It's where you access the, like, the Sharp Lab and the campus. So there's Park Road, and then there's, it's signed as College Drive. It's just that little.
Right, 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 right. But, but they're actually thinking about raising New Road or Piletown?
No, Piletown.
Piletown Road. Oh, yes, okay, got it. Okay, thank you very much. And that's just in a proposal stage?
Um, well, I mean, they're, they've done a study, they've done a lot of modeling, and now I think they're ready to start having discussions publicly about what they're looking at, which we hope to have them come and talk to you guys soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so on to the, the agenda portion. So under unfinished business, the only part that we have is a discussion, possible action on the continuations, as evaluation of monthly workshop meetings. So I assume that's what we're looking to do here, is to see if we want to continue with that format. So I'll open it up for discussion to see, you know, if we want to, one, continue, but two, maybe what changes, if any, you'd like to see.
Day of the week, we kind of need to nail down, because it's been, it was intended to be Friday. I don't think we've had one on a Friday yet, so maybe Friday's not the best day. So we need to figure out what the best day is.
We've had it mostly on Wednesdays, right? As I recall.
Does seem to work.
I mean. She can't do Wednesdays.
Can we be flexible, or do we, can we?
I think, I think the, the public can plan better, as can all of you, if it's on a consistent day. But if we need to, I don't think it's unworkable. I just.
I mean, because they're, these meetings, the workshops are noticed, correct?
They're noticed.
It'd have to be seven days' notice, right?
Yeah.
So.
We probably want to plan a couple months out so that we don't end up getting, you know.
It's true, we have a next one to do.
The next one's set, right? The 28th?
The next one's set for the 28th at 10:00 a.m.
Right.
Because the Chamber breakfast is that morning.
So you want to try Fridays then, Phil? Is that a better day for you?
I think so. I mean, I'm flexible. I just don't do Wednesdays.
I would suggest Tuesday mornings or Thursday mornings or Fridays. I mean, we're talking, you know, once a month, right?
Yeah.
Is the rental committee on Tuesdays on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thursdays.
Well, but, but wait a minute. That's just, that's just this one. It will be on Tuesdays.
So why don't we pick Friday for now? It's a morning, right? Prefer a morning?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
The only conflict I have is that we have a finance meeting that I do on Fridays.
Fridays?
Friday 29th. That's only this one time.
Okay, then.
How often are your meetings, Austin?
First one.
Yeah.
See? It's probably, I'm guessing it's either going to be Monday.
Okay. So why don't we just, can I get a motion that, one, we want to approve, approve continuing with them? And that will tend to be, have it on Fridays at 10:00 a.m. Can I get a motion to that effect?
9:00 a.m.
That way we can finish by lunch.
To make a motion that we continue the workshop meetings on Friday and, as needed, reschedule them to a different day as appropriate.
That's a good motion. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good stuff. All right, so the next one, I'm actually going to recuse. This is about a presentation, possible action on request for dedicated on-street parking for 12 Kentucky. So I don't have on-street, off-street parking myself, so I recuse from these. Okay? You want to shoot me a text when you.
Okay.
So with this one.
Do you want me to give an overview?
Sure.
So, so as you all know, mayor and council approved for properties, residential properties on Lewis Beach without dedicated off-street parking. You all approved to have up to two on-street parking spaces designated. The resident at 12 Kentucky Avenue has requested the same accommodation. I did review the property. There's, there's a wall along the alley. I did review the property. There's, uh, there's a wall along the alley and there's an opening in the wall to get to what you could call parking at the rear of, of the house. But it's, it's not paved. It's a very tight turn with the, the wall to, to really even be able to get in there. Yeah, and, and there's tree roots that make it, you know, not, not very smooth. In addition, it takes you to the, the back of the house, not to the front. It's an elderly resident. I believe she's a full-time resident there.
If she is, it's recent.
Okay. But it's a, it's an elderly woman who's recently widowed and she has requested to be able to have an on-street space.
I would simply add that, I don't know, I think we've granted four or five of these over the last year. I would add that these are only for an operation from May 1st to October 14th. And these are two spots that, that people have had. And thus far, uh, my understanding, they've worked very well, although I do think we need to talk about, I actually visited one of our residents that, uh, this afternoon who actually got a ticket.
And Dennis and I discussed that.
Yeah.
He's already gone, right?
Yeah.
Dennis and I discussed it and that was something he was going to review with the staff.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that maybe we should, in addition to giving them the two parking spots for that, for that period of time, that we should give them two hang tags or something so that whenever Dennis and his team are there, they, they will see that these are the authorized parking vehicles.
With that.
Well, do the, do the other people who have the benefit of these parking spaces, do they actually have hang tags?
No.
No.
None of them do?
None of them do.
None of them do. So it's not a requirement of it?
Yeah, so I think that this, the one where they got tickets, Charlie and I actually went out and looked at it from a visibility perspective. They're on a corner, so there's that area that has the yellow markings where you can't park on the pavement.
Right.
But it's back off the pavement. And we put the sign there so you can see that it says, you know, resident parking only between the signs. But I guess what the, what the parking enforcement officer saw was that they were in that area that had the, again, they weren't on the hatch marks. They were off the road, but they identified that it is no parking. So when I talked to Dennis, he, um, he, one, dismissed the tickets, two, reached out to the resident and, and three, was going to clarify with his staff the arrangement.
I would, may I speak for a second, please? First of all, I'm very, I'm sympathetic to this person's plea with respect to mobility issues and the benefit that would be derived by her being able to park, excuse me, on the street. I will say that originally the plan that we had, the, that we have on the books is to accommodate people who have, do not have parking, the ability to have a driveway on their property. And as you described, Emery, there is an accommodation in the, in the back that does in fact provide a driveway. And I think historically has been used that way. But nonetheless, I can reason why with an accommodation should be made here. The one concern that I would have is that I would like to share with everyone, just an observation, is that, uh, that with this property receiving the benefit of street parking, reserved parking, we have, it puts adjacent properties with the same benefit. And that is worrisome because that means that you're, we don't have public parking on that street in that section. And, uh, the, we, we can approve up to two spaces. We're not required to approve two spaces. We can approve up to two spaces. The adjacent neighbor, the one towards the corner of Cedar, has two spaces. And, uh, I, it does concern me and I think we, we should be mindful of, I did, you know, if we grant up to two spaces, what the impact of that will be for public parking on that street.
How you feel if we review it every year?
I think that's, so in other words, grant, grant one.
I, I see this as a hardship.
Oh, I do too.
Okay, so we, we grant it, uh, but we do it under the premise that we have to review it every year because circumstances do change.
Sure, they do change. I think that's a wonderful idea.
And if I understand, Emery, the, these permits are for the individual, not the home.
Correct.
Um, they're actually, it, it's resident-only parking, but we don't get their tag number. So it's, you know, if they want to tell their, their kids, go ahead and park there, we, we haven't looked at whose vehicle it is. We, um.
Shouldn't that be part of what we're administering here?
Shouldn't we have a tag number?
We could.
Well, we will.
I don't think we need a tag number. I think we need a tag.
To identify the car.
I think we need.
The benefit to be.
Uh, uh, as I suggested earlier, a hang tag.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty simple.
If it's for the elderly individual who has mobility problems, then it's, it's for the person. I guess what I'm saying is not for the house.
Correct.
So it is not in perpetuity. It's for the duration of that individual's need.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah. With one-year review.
Right, and that's what Carolyn was suggesting with the one-year review, right?
So I'm just, for clarity purposes, what would that review entail? Would they have to reapply every year?
It actually should be whether or not a person is still living there. You know, circumstances do change.
If, if they sell the house and you have a.
I mean, we don't want it to roll over to the next people.
Couple that doesn't have the need.
Well, I, I don't know about that. I, I don't recall this completely being all about hardship. This was mostly about people who didn't have off-street parking.
In your original.
Yeah, I don't recall someone had to demonstrate a handicap or any kind of.
With, with the beach parking.
Right.
With, with the beach parking and, and I guess are, my understanding is you're considering it a hardship because, not because of the location of the parking as much as it is the location, difficulty of the existing parking combined with the, the age of the resident.
What you're saying is when you guys did parking, you didn't look at that aspect of it. You did it from a ownership of.
And anybody who did not, any residents that did not have off-street parking.
And I thought there was an age component to it originally.
There was not an age.
It was not an age component.
And I don't want to interfere with what you've already decided and you, and what you guys have.
No, because the, the ones that we based it on were, were on Market Street and there wasn't an age factor there.
No. Oh, right, the original.
The original.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Precedent.
The ones that were done years ago.
Yeah, we've already established that. I don't want to deviate from that.
Okay.
Do we have a consent?
I'm, yeah. Nope. Yeah, I'm, does anybody have any more comment or, or questions? Good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, please. I'll make a motion that we approve.
You've got to hand up.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we got a hand?
Oh. Yes, yes.
Oh, Kim. Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, we didn't notice you, Kim.
I, I apologize for coming into this late.
Pull the mic down.
Yeah.
What did I do wrong?
Mike, just pull the mic down, just so.
Okay.
And I introduce yourself.
Sorry. Kim Avazian, 312 Pilot Town Road. And I've come into this situation late. I did not attend or, or listen to the hearings regarding the parking and off-street parking issues on Lewis Beach. My question is, if you provide dedicated on-street parking for homes on Lewis Beach do not, who do not have driveways, why is it any different from people who live in the historic district who do not have off-street parking, making the same request for dedicated parking spaces?
Well, first of all, I, I think we do have, don't we have a couple downtown who have requested this?
Well, we have one that's requested it, but there haven't been any granted.
That doesn't mean it can't be.
No, that doesn't mean we can't. The, the difference also is, in my, my view, in, in some spots downtown, there is paid parking there.
Well, there's paid parking, but then you're, you're talking about the residents.
Yeah, there's no difference far as I'm concerned.
So, so then you would perhaps have a deluge of requests from people who live on Mulberry and Market and, uh, all through the historic district. Not, there are, I've walked, there are a lot of houses who've maybe once had a, you know, brass driveway or the curb cuts there, but they've made gardens and now.
Well, that's different, isn't it?
Well, why is that any different from.
They have removed their, their parking.
Well.
Yeah, that, that they originally had.
Some have, but there are others who have not.
Right.
They just, the houses are close together. There's no parking spaces. So what I foresee is a problem of trying to differentiate and, and, and come up with a rationale why some people should get off-street parking, oh, excuse me, on, on-street parking and deprive the public, the beachgoers, the people who, who want to go out there or, or literally in town, in the historic district where I spend most of my time. You know, anybody could park on any of those streets if they can find a parking spot. And having grown up in a town where there was no parking associated with a home, I mean, you would circle around the block until somebody pulled out and you could pull your car in. So I, I just find it this sort of piecemeal or, or almost arbitrary. Well, somebody asks for it and they get it and somebody else asks for it and they don't get it. Why? And what, and why should it be any different for one section of town and another section of town?
I mean, I'll speak for myself. I personally don't see any difference. And, and this policy has been in place for a while. But I think what, and, and you make a fair point, but I think one of the reasons why we're dealing with it now is we're hearing, there's been a lot, a lot more people visiting Lewis and these people who didn't have off-street parking would simply have, find plenty of spots on the street where they could park and it wasn't a problem. But now with the influx of visitors and guests and others, there's a lot less, lot less parking capacity available.
And that applies in.
Everywhere.
Many, everywhere.
Everywhere, absolutely.
I don't quite see how you would be able to manage to give everyone in town who needs a parking space, a resident who needs a parking space on the street.
Well, I think that's going to be a function of trying to determine how many homes actually fit that, 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 that situation.
Well, and, and then the fact that you've got paid parking and whether or not that is something you're going to reserve for people who don't live here and then all the other people who do reside here and you've got part-time people, you've got renters, you've got all kinds of, uh, different situations. It just seems like you need to think this through a little bit more.
I think.
And, and come up with, uh, standards. I could understand someone who has a handicap and needs not, needs to be able to park in front of his or her house if they don't have a driveway, if they have a bona fide handicap, but not just because they don't have a parking space. Thank you for, I apologize for coming into this.
No, you, you raised very good points.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So moving on to this Kentucky Avenue property and do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
No, there's no formal motion.
There is no formal motion. I will entertain a motion.
I'd still make a motion because of the hardship of this woman. I read what she submitted. I went to look at the property and I'm inclined to think that this is one that we should go with. So I make a motion that we, uh, grant.
I have a second.
I, I'm going to ask, could the motion address how many spaces? Are we talking one space?
Well, I think, what was her request?
She didn't.
She didn't request.
I don't think she said.
Suggested one, I would think.
I think she said one.
She did say one. I didn't see that. I'm, I'm reading it now. I don't.
I don't think it specified a number.
I would suggest in, in, since we're going to review this and review others every year, that we be consistent with every other one we've done and.
Well, you've already done this with some.
And then do two and then next year we will look at it and whether she wanted one or not. I mean, or do, or do we defer this and wait to find out if she's requesting one or two?
Well, I think there's a couple of things you can take in consideration. She does have an existing driveway. Correct. So, um, does she need the two or does she just need the one? And then I think, did you still want to review this on an annual basis and did you want to have a hang tag?
It has to be reviewed on annual basis. Circumstances change.
The specific properties.
Oh, I, I personally don't think she has a driveway. If, if that's considered a driveway, usable driveway, that's not a usable driveway. I mean, you, you can't turn it and no one, I can't turn it in there and no one can turn it in there. But it is, has the potential to be a driveway.
I did.
It has the potential to be a driveway.
That's you. I went over there and the way that wall is made and the way that hump is and considering who the woman is, I'm still going to stay with my thought.
Yeah. It would require you to turn on someone else's property to get into that spot as it is now. Off the alley. You would have to turn off the alley to get into that spot right now. So, uh, uh, do you want to, uh, do you want to amend your, your motion, Carolyn, and just say one spot or?
I always thought it was one. I never thought it was two.
Okay, then.
I mean, that was my assumption. It's not in the writing, but she's asking for herself.
Yes, Kayla?
Um, I do have a question. In the motion, are you adding the yearly evaluation or are you not adding the yearly evaluation?
Yes, we evaluate it.
Okay.
There's a motion for one spot. I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Paul, you drew it.
Is he coming?
Yeah.
And with regards to the hang tag that we're talking about, I don't think we need to vote on it. That's, that, to me, that's more of an administrative, um, issue that we should definitely look into.
All right. Yeah, let's pick up, uh, I choose. So this is, um, I choose, this says, "Presentation Possible Action Regarding A Request To Reduce A Landscape Buffer For Parcel Of Land Located Within The Jefferson Court Subdivision." The address there is 12 Jefferson Court. And, uh, this is a matter that's been before, uh, the, the planning commission. And, uh, you'll see it in your inter, introduction there, the background. Planning commission discussed, uh, their June 15th meeting. And Janelle, I don't know if there was other, anything else you need to fill us in on the requests as people have read.
If you'd like me to, just for everybody in the public as well, just give a brief overview. What the applicant is doing is they'd like to extend a deck into their, to their front yard, which is they consider their rear yard. This is a through lot, so it actually has two front yard setbacks. When this subdivision was developed, there was a 10-foot landscape buffer that goes around the entire perimeter of the, the subdivision and is on the property and, on the individual properties. So this applicant is requesting relief to reduce that 10-foot landscape buffer to a six-foot landscape buffer. The planning commission, as you did note, did hear this application and discuss this application. At their June meeting, they, the planning commission did recommend denial of the rec, of the reduction in the landscape buffer and the motion did carry, um, six to two. And there is, and, um, somebody here on behalf of the applicant, if you'd like to hear from them as well.
Does that take a vote?
Yeah.
If you want to come on up, yeah, sure thing. Go ahead.
And I believe the applicant is on via Zoom.
Yeah, they are. Um, Tim Willard with Foodway, uh, Willard and Shop. We have offices in Georgetown, Rehoboth, and now in Lewis.
Oh, yes.
I'm hoping we got our business license.
We'll better.
Fourth and Savannah.
Maybe we should suspend this presentation.
Right, right. Between hand shocker and I'm pretty sure we did.
We'll make sure. Don't you worry. Now that you've fully disclosed this in a public setting.
Yeah, I'm not hiding it. So, yeah, I'll try to be brief and efficient. Yeah, I'm not hiding it. Um, so yeah, I'll try to be brief and efficient on this one. I actually, Laura and Alex, you've referred to them, so they're probably looking over my shoulder or whatever they're seeing. They're online. They're from Virginia. They can't, couldn't be here. So I, um, just to let you know my involvement, I was not at the planning commission hearing. Since that time, I've reviewed emails to date back to October when they had started this project and there's been a lot of back and forth about this project. And so I met with them and did a little research and I listened to the planning commission. Meeting. We are asking, they are asking for a reduction. There's a 10-foot landscape buffer. That if you have a copy of the site plan, I think there was one in the packet in 2007 when this minor subdivision or subdivision. When minor was approved, Jefferson Court, you're all familiar with it. It's a T at the end of Jefferson. They put a, a 10-foot landscape buffer around the entire parcel. Included in the lots, which is a little unusual. Usually you might see it in the open space and easement. So, um, as Janelle said, they, they consider this two fronts. Because there's a front on Jefferson Court and a front on Freeman Highway, even though there's, there's no access to Freeman Highway. So it's almost debatable that it is two fronts, but it doesn't matter anyway because it's front and rear 15-foot each. Except it should be for purposes of the setback, the, um, established business line, if it is another front. But we're not here today about setbacks. We're here today about the conservation or the landscape buffer. It's 10 feet. And so it, um. The reason they wanted, and I think their plans are in there, the back of their house, the stairs go right off the center of the back of the house. They have two children, I think nine, five, I don't know. And the relatively small backyards, so they want a, a deck back there and they have removed some trees. Which they shouldn't have done, but they had to remove them in their mind because they were, they were knocking over the fence. So they fully intend to re-landscape the whole, uh, whole backyard and they want to do it as part of this deck project. And instead of, um, six feet, they want to go out 10 feet and which would be four feet into the landscape buffer. So they're asking for that, that, uh, change in the buffer. And I think what's important, we're asking you to not necessarily, uh, disagree with the majority's opinion. But agree with the minority's opinion at the planning commission to voted for it and we believe they, they, they apply the, the right standard. And, and let me just talk about that for a second because what, what is the standard on this to review it? We, we believe it's just a reasonable standard and, um, it's, you have a section of your code that's 170. What is it Glenn? I'm not sure. 177 modification waivers and varying requirements. And, and not to put Glenn on the spot, but you don't have minutes, um, you don't have minutes yet that are printed. So I have the audio of the, what, what the standard was presented to the planning commission. There's some confusion. Takes about a minute. I'll play it for you. So, so that's what Glenn, and I, I think he stated it well because it's kind of unusual. It's not like a waiver of a subdivision requirement. It was a condition they put on them. It's not part of your code, but it was accepted by the applicant. Then one of the commissioners.
This is a, this is a request for a planned modification. So I think the analysis you should be doing is. It's sort of, for some reason that landscape buffer was required and was approved. So it's serving some function. Is it continuing to serve that? Is there, is there a need for that landscape buffer to continue? And if there is, then perhaps you leave it in place. If there's, if you don't see there. Currently or continuing need for that buffer, then it might be appropriate for a waiver.
In this case, um, for it to continue, but in a lesser dimension.
Just on that point, Glenn, which I, I think is sort of the principle here, which is that. These buffers are designed to take runoff from impervious services, in this case Freeman Highway. And filter it and, 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 you know, so to absorb into the ground. And, uh, you know, and just lessen the impacts of that on water quality and, and, and everything else. In addition to trees and shrubbery, you know, having, uh, uh, a positive impact on. Carbon sequestration, you know, just, uh, so, so the, the, so that, that's sort of the principle. Having that kind of a buffer around this land. We just, we had a big discussion about this, you know, during our. Debate over the, over the code that was just put in and, and looking at, you know, what, what is going on with, uh, you know, with buffers in general. So that to me is the principle. The question here is whether this would make much of a difference. There still is going to be a buffer. It would just be smaller than it, uh, than it would otherwise be. And, uh, and that to me is the question for us now. To grant a, you know, an exception for this particular instance and, but keep the principle, uh, in mind here.
The section of code that applies here to see that. It says in usual conditions where an applicant shows that strict compliance with the requirements of this chapter would result in extraordinary hardship. So hardship is used in this language, uh, extraordinary hardship to the applicant or to the city's objectives. Because of conditions which are self-imposed by the applicant or conditions exist which would result in inhibiting the achievement of the objective. Objectives of these provisions, the American City Council may vary upon it by or waive the requirements. So that substantial justice may be done and the public interest secured provided. And then it goes on with some other stuff, but that kind of the framework of what you should be thinking about.
Voting against the denial, I believe everybody should have a deck. There's a fence along there. Nobody in their right mind, unless they're a peeping tom, is going to sneak over the fence. And I think the homeowners deserve a deck.
I, I oppose the denial, uh, for the same reasons that Joe indicated. I think that principle here is an important one, but I think that this, you know, four feet is, um, fairly minimal. Given the, given the circumstance and children involved, you know, that, that, uh, that, that would benefit from a deck. And I don't think it would materially or significantly impact the neighborhood. So that, that's why.
Yeah, thank you for listening. That, that last speaker that spoke earlier is Ridge. Yeah, he has some, um, background in environmental stuff. Uh, yeah, I think he worked on Capitol Hill and things like that. But in any event, and you know, I thought Glenn stated well. What the standard was before and then he referred to 177. That's where I disagree with him and he can chime in if he wants. That section, that section of the code is rather burdensome when they talk about, um, extraordinary hardship. Not self-imposed. Um, and I didn't want to play, obviously I played the, the people that voted my way. You got that.
I got that.
That's what we do.
No, no, I got it. I got it.
But wouldn't it, to the, to the point, and I'm not trying to hide anything, when they did, several of them spoke of the hardship. And the self-imposed, which I don't believe is a standard. You might end up disagreeing with me. But that section refers to, um, waivers that are, it actually says. Where an applicant shows that the strict compliance with the requirements of this chapter. Okay. And, and the landscape buffer on your property is not a requirement of the chapter. Okay. It was one imposed. It's one they did. Probably to save some of the nearby neighbors. So, and if that doesn't persuade you that that's the standard. And you can agree with my standard and still say they don't get it, but I think based on a reasonable standard, it makes sense. Basically because Rich made the case pretty well, I think. But on, on the site plan, there are notes on the site plan and the site plan says. I had to blow it up because you, you need a magnifying glass to see it. The land, and this is kind of unusual with the note, and it says, the landscape buffer shall be maintained to the reasonable satisfaction of the city. Of Lewis by the owner of the property upon which such landscape buffer exists. That's the notes that was recorded, that was stamped by the city as approved.
Get that one more time.
Do we have a copy of that one?
One more time.
It, it would be on the plat.
It'd be on the record plan.
So, yeah, read that again.
Yes, please.
Okay, there are two that deal with the landscape. You know, the notes deal with all kinds of stuff.
Sure, yeah, but just, just read what you just did.
The landscape buffer shall be maintained to the reasonable satisfaction of the city of Lewis. By the owner of the property upon which such landscape buffer, buffer exists.
Right.
So it, it basically just says the city can monitor this and, you know, they have to, you have to decide whether it's you. Ultimate arbiter of decisions in this town or whether it's somebody in, you know, parks or whatever. They have to just be satisfied. It's being maintained to their satisfaction.
Right. And the maintain does not include removal of plant material, correct? Or removal of the buffer?
No, well, they, that.
I mean, removal is separate from maintaining, correct?
Yeah, they, they should not have removed it.
Right.
That, I mean, we're not, they, they're going to replant that whole area and do it quite nicely, one way or the other. They didn't realize that they, they couldn't remove it and in light of the, the, so yeah, that's bad. We're dirty as far as that's concerned. And you have a picture of it. Um, they're trying to improve their property. So I just think that goes to the, there's just a reasonable standard in here. It's still required. And again, I think Rich articulated well that you have 65 feet of right away on the other side of that fence. There's nobody back there, uh, for the environmental purposes of runoff. Um, it doesn't make much difference. You're not going to set up, you know, any, any dangerous precedent here. It's just for this lot. Others could come to you with similar arguments that might be persuasive.
Was there no other place on that property that they can, uh, build this?
Well, there was some conversation about, and I forget who it was, because I was, I just watched the, the, where. Instead of doing it six feet or instead of doing it 10 feet, can you just do it six and isn't that wide enough? And i- there is a fair amount of difference between six and 10 as far as being able to sit and walk by and have benches out there. But in any event, one individual, the commission said, if you look at the, the two notches that are in the back. They said, well, you can have a path to those. Okay. On the one on the left that I'm looking at on the left, there are two large, uh, HVA air conditioner systems. In that area. And on the other side, it's a, it's a closed porch and there's no access to it from the outside. So in the stairs, see where the 28 is right in front of the BRL line.
Right.
That's where their stairs go out. So that's why.
I attended that meeting that you, the planning commission meeting and it's my recollection that what was proposed. Is the, that there would be in effect a, this, what would, what they're asking for is in effect a elevated. Walk to the deck. Is that not, am I mistaken?
No, some, there, there was various debate about the elevation of the deck because I think you can, you can get into the setback. But it's not a certain height and I think what they're going to do is propose it as a height where they can get into the setback up to 10 feet. But that's a, that's a BOA issue that we can talk about because apparently if they have a setback issue, they got to go to board of adjustment anyway. But no, they, they would like, uh, it's 40 by 10 to cover the back of their house. And I'm, I'm saying if you all grant this, uh, two, uh, four-foot allowance in this conservation easement. That also make it a condition to, to submit the landscape plan. So you see exactly what they're going to plant there with the debt project. It makes sense because they, they shouldn't have removed it in the first place. But that's, that's sort of makes.
Have they gotten, uh, any feedback from their neighbors about their thoughts on it?
No, and they submitted a couple of pictures of neighbors that have already done this. Not exactly.
Already done this?
There's a couple that where they've done patios that go wreck into the conservation easement and it's not purvious necessarily. These, and there might be wincing behind me, but they don't want to, you know, point to a lot of neighbors and.
Sure.
You know, it's, they're very private back there because you have a large fence. Freeman Highway is on the other side of it.
Tim, are they, uh, the material, the, the plant material that was removed? Does it run the entire width of the right of what, you know, of the?
I think, I, I have a Google Earth picture that I think it did. There were a bunch of pine trees that were planted too close and they were knocking over the fence. So, you know, they have a landscape or they, they're, the landscaping plan will, will go contingent. Yeah, that's an older, that's an older, um, Google Earth because there was those pine tree sale those and they're too big and they're knocking over the fence. But they kept, I think, the cherry that's one in the middle.
Mr. Willard, how many trees did they remove?
Uh, yeah, it looks like four or five.
They just cut down trees?
There's your light on Cypress.
Yeah. And there, when I listen to the thing and you look at the survey, it, it's a little unclear. You have a, a, a landscape buffer on, on the side where it's labeled swale. And it does, the line does go across, it's not labeled as well. So, I mean, they weren't, they weren't trying to get away with something that's certainly going to make it right and plant whatever they can.
Right.
So I said I'd come to this meeting and see if we could, uh, make some progress. That's all I have.
Janelle, may I ask you a question? Please stay there. Janelle, am I mistaken about what was the description of where the deck was going to be constructed? I, I really thought that this was going to be in effect a walk, if you will, to a deck. That was, but this is what Mr. Willard has described is the deck is coming right off the back, off this back corner. And running towards the east, I guess that is. And then is that?
So there were many different options thrown out during the planning commission meeting. So you, you are recalling correctly.
Okay.
Um, as is Mr. Willard there, because there was a lot of discussion. The intent of the applicant is to come straight off the back of the house and go towards where it says County Road 23. That's their intent is to, that deck's just going to come straight off.
And come out 10 feet.
And come up, uh, 10 feet.
And, okay, and then go.
And then go, I think, both ways.
So out this way and this way.
Yes.
Right, which is this back plus that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it would go beyond if, if, uh, in here, right, they want to come out the 10 by 40?
Yeah.
So.
That would leave six foot of the conservation.
So the deck would be wider than the house itself. Cause the houses, no, I take that back. The house is about 50 feet.
So it would, I think from what you've described, what Mr. Willard's described, it sounds like this is 28 feet wide here. That it would come out 10 feet, move in this direction down to where the port, you described a porch, I believe here. So that's a covered screen porch. So it would be on the, if you will, the backside of that screen porch. So that's 28 plus 12 equals 40. Right? Isn't that the 40-foot length that we're talking about? Yeah, I have, I have the builder's original haze carpentry proposal and it was, uh, originally 14 and then they reduced it to 10. Yes, it, because not knowing that the, the conservation is, so yeah, but 10 and 40 is what he originally had. What I think the plan is, where exactly it fits on there. I'm not positive, but I think you're correct. They're just asking for four feet further into the conservation easement and they may be able to do some planners in there too. You know how they do sometimes on the edge of decks.
Right. I'm going to ask a question that I know I'm getting into weeds here, but I, I want you to bear with me. The trees. I'm sorry. Native. My, my question is this, trees were removed. I understand that the, they're, the applicant is going to re-landscape, but will they be re-landscaping with trees? Evergreen trees, do you know, or are they putting in shrubs and things that are less consequential for. You know, the environment. I mean, there's benefits for having trees here for just the noise abatement. It buffers the noise coming off of Freeman Highway.
From them, I think they would want that. So, yeah, they'd have an.
That's how I would do it, but I'm not the property.
So staff actually, because now it is a code enforcement issue.
Right.
Has told them they need to replant with trees.
With trees.
So we are required, because they took trees out, they need to replant trees.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, if you can give us.
Thank you.
If you give us, with them this leeway, I think it's perfectly appropriate to require the city approve the landscape plan too. Because, and then that we, so we don't have to go to court on a code enforcement thing.
Is that a threat?
No, no. I just, I just think it's a reasonable thing, especially the location, the big picture here. Uh, it makes sense. Otherwise I wouldn't be here, probably.
Yeah. So do you have more questions or are we anyone prepared to make a motion? Thank you for your answer my questions. Appreciate it. Is that the owner, Alejandro? Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Yeah. You guys want to hear from him?
Yeah, sure.
Alejandro, you should just have to unmute at this point.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me now?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for your time. And trying to help us. Yeah, we are, we did remove the pine, there were pine trees overgrowing. And we, before we did it, it was a verbal, verbal agreement with the city that we went as, our builder went and asked the city that they was allowed to remove the trees, and they agreed with it. Now, we did promise and we did say that we are going to plant Delaware native trees. And also, the, the patio deck is actually is gonna be a lower deck, almost on the ground. It's not disturbing anything, it's not disturbing the ground. We only gonna dig the holes to put the posts, and it will be probably a foot off the ground. So we can just enjoy the backyard, to have some a little privacy. And how I say to our lawyer, everyone in, in our street, they all have their patios flat. And they enjoy in their backyards. We don't. So that's why we tried to do in the right way. We tried to ask the city what we can do, but we feel in the beginning, we don't know any, any laws in Delaware. I'm from DC. We don't know any laws. We don't know anything. We asked for help for the city. When we, when our Jason, our builder, went and asked for permission, the city agreed thirteen feet. Then they came back, then they say, I'm sorry, ten feet. Then they say, no, it's, it's eleven feet. Then they came up and says, only six feet allowed. So we feel that we are trying to do our best for our home, for our kids. And we just feel that we were not treated right. Because from the beginning, we paid for the trees to be removed. I have sitting on a warehouse with the builder, all the materials, because it was verbally approved from the city before. And then when our, when our handyman, not handyman, landscaper, the, the person that was gonna do the construction, he was about to get the lot, the permit. They told him in the very last minute, wait, wait one second, we need to review this. Then they said, we contact you shortly. He left fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes later, they came back, and they say, I'm sorry, we, we denied the permit. And this is why we are here, asking for your help.
Alejandro, do you have a record of who, who you had this verbal agreement with?
So it was Jason, it was our, his house builder, he spoke to Joe. The lady on the right, I'm sorry, I'm bad with names. She knows who I'm talking about. We, we, we had a meeting with them. Then also, Mr. Robin, he was supposed to be meet us on site. And he never meet us on our house. He sent Joe and said, I'm sorry, I'm too busy to come to this meeting. We felt that we were being disrespectful, because I drove from DC. And then, just let me like that. So I'm a little bit upset with this. And I please, I, I'm asking you for your help with this. So yeah, so all, all, our, our lawyer has all the information. He has the communications, he has the emails. There's been given to us from the officials on the city, so he will give you all the information if you wanna read them.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, thank, thank you, Alex. I said this dated back till October. I've looked at a bunch of emails. I sort of decided to not play that card. You know, it's water under the bridge right now. They just wanna get this done. If council wants to get into that history, I have emails basically, but as I, as I told you earlier, I got in this, like, last week.
Well, from my perspective, there's too many uncertainty. I personally would table this, so we could find out. I mean, there's comments that's been made as it relates to the city that, and I'm just not, I'm just not getting this. I'm not going to make a decision on something where I don't have all the parts.
Support that? All right, so we got a motion to table this for tonight. And do we got a second from you, Candace?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that? Sorry, Tim, I just I assume we have the same, access to the same emails there, Emery?
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. And thanks, thanks for that motion, Carolyn. Okay, can we, moving on then, our next item is presentation, this is I, three folks, presentation of possible action regarding a waiver to eliminate a portion of sidewalk along Riverburg Drive within the Lewis Waterfront Preserve subdivision. Jan, do you wanna introduce this one? And I think we do have the developers here as well.
We do. So this is a request from Lewis Waterfront Preserve to eliminate a portion of the sidewalk along Riverburg Drive. This is the cul-de-sac at the end of the development that is potentially allowed for, to allow for interconnection if the property ever, to the west ever develops. The planning commission did review this application at the June fifteenth meeting, and they did recommend approval of the the waiver with a couple of, in additional items. One, they wanted to see what the, wanted to do to see what the barricade would look like at the end. And then a better drawing showing kind of exactly where the sidewalk would end and where a crosswalk would be located, and that has been provided. So the issue here is, after the, the subdivision was approved, the current developer purchased it. They went out and started doing constructions and determination that there's, there's a ditch at the very edge of the property that is now causing problems for the placement of the sidewalk. So that is the reason they are requesting relief from the sidewalk for, again, just this portion of the cul-de-sac.
And that ditch was never, never revealed on previous plans, right?
Correct. It was not shown. The engineer did not pick it up. Nobody had picked it up when it went through the review and approval process. So the, not our engineer, the, the, that, that's not his responsibility or the city's responsibility. It was the, the developer, the original developer, engineer did not pick it up on any of the plans. So nobody quite knew that it was there until construction began.
Who's responsible for the ditch?
That, I think the owner, the current property owner could answer, because it's not a tax ditch. This does not, this is not, it's not a tax ditch. It doesn't, it, there's, there's no tax ditch maintenance. There, it has not been designated as a tax ditch by the Conservation District nor the state. So it's just some, a ditch that exists. I'm gonna guess part of the responsibility might be the current property owner, because I think part of it's on his property. And then the majority would then be most likely the responsibility of the other property owner who's, who's landed, is located on.
Are you Mr. Sipple?
Good evening, yes, Mr. Bob Sipple, current owner and developer of the, of the record plan and subdivision plan. Thanks for your time and consideration. So you asked a good question. Why didn't this show up on any type of existing conditions or aays and plats? And it did not. So it's, it's, it's a substantial ditch. When we first got back to that area, it's, it's definitely a drainage ditch. It comes off of perpendicular off of New Road. Runs down the westwardly portion of our parcel. It then makes a job east behind our parcels towards Canary Creek. So it does, it does take stormwater flow off of the adjacent property that's still a bit agricultural use. So we get back there, we, we lined our, staked out our road beds, but we installed our catch basins. When we got to this location, you have the catch basin is set. And we realized that directly behind the catch basin, we have about four feet until we hit the top of this slope. And it drops fairly significantly. And then we have, at, at seven feet behind the catch basin is where the back of the sidewalk would normally be. Eight feet behind the catch basin is our property line. So if the, if the, the existing ditch is twenty feet wide, we're about the first four feet of that. And then the rest of it is only adjacent property. But, you know, that's running east to west. Running parallel to our property line, it's significant, it's probably.
Yeah, that, a twenty-foot wide ditch is.
You missed that.
Yeah, that's a ravine. That's, that's, yeah.
In August of twenty-one, just after it was approved and recorded. And then we got underway with site work, probably late fall, October, November-ish, we got into this area with our stormpipe installation early spring, March, early April, when we realized, hey, from the aerials, it shows up, it shows up as a tree line hedge row. So it, it never really shows up on, on any maps or any aerials or historical aerials as a, as a ditch. Until you get back in there and the trees, and then you see. So the hedge row was always assumed to be the property line, the boundary line. So when I, when I acquired the, the set of plans, and we did all of our due diligence, you know, everything we relied on was thought to be vetted and prosecuted by the, a whole planning process and review and approval process. So we're, we're proposing the termination of the sidewalks on both sides of Riverburg Drive to, to end just at the edge of the last homes on that road. Install the ramps and the crosswalk. And then leave the rest of the cul-de-sac perimeter as grass, as turf. So you'd have the curb, the catch basin that's already in place, and then grass, directly behind the catch basin. One of the notes here, you'll see is proposed, some type of proposed armament stabilization riprap. Just to, to further reinforce that four or five feet behind the catch basin that, where the slope begins. And then in addition to that, for safety, we propose some type of a barricade. That's what I pulled off the, the plant set, just as an example. I think the dimensions are adequate. Not so sure about the aesthetics. I, I would rather propose something more natural, but the, the one I have circled here is sixteen foot across and into, to the post set, eight foot on center. So I would, I'm, I'm open to suggestions or recommendations as far as the looks of, of that particular.
I was gonna ask you the same thing.
Is there a requirement from the city that it be barricaded like that? Could you use a natural material?
I would you know, historically, we'd used a very natural-looking guard rail. Kind of a I think the, one of the comments and requests from the planning commission was something that was more apparent for safety reasons. Not that I would think anybody's driving at a high rate of speed towards the cul-de-sac.
It's like a railroad crossing.
So, yeah, again, I was giving more dimensions for this illustration than aesthetics. I would prefer something much more natural-looking. I thought about just kind of a split rail wood fence. But in conjunction with the stabilization of, of that area, I think something a little more robust as far as setting footers and posts would, would serve a better purpose and, and last a lot longer. And this is something that's ultimately gonna be dedicated over to the city of Lewis as part of your right-of-way. So something that looks nice, but something that's also long-lasting.
Yeah, low maintenance. I'm gonna raise a question that has nothing to do with the barricade or the designer, the aesthetics. My concern is focused on the ditch and the ditch line. And I'm familiar with this whole project site, so I'm gonna bring forward that, that knowledge. And if there's a ditch that, on the adjacent property or on this property, there's probably a good reason why that ditch was put there. And I don't know what that reason is, and I don't know who constructed that. But if in fact that ditch runs from New Road, it suggests that possibly Del Dot put this ditch in. Or that's maybe a party to the ditch, I'll put it that way. Do we know, in fact, has there been any title search to find out, in fact, who does own this ditch?
Well, we looked at all the tax ditch. And, and we haven't turned anything up. It, it doesn't show up on our.
I understand it doesn't show up on yours. Where I'm going with this.
Expect that Del Dot's very familiar with that whole corridor. There's been catch basins installed along New Road. From our site up to Tower Hill. So I, I haven't heard any, any type of comments or.
The reason I'm raising this question, the, the way I am, and speaking to familiarity with this job site, I'm aware that somewhere along this stretch of homes, somewhere between sixty-nine, lots sixty-nine and fifty-eight, I believe, there is a there is, it's the I don't know if it's called the wetland line, or there is some these homes, there are a couple of these homes are very close to what will become where the water will creep into it. And I'm wondering if this ditch, this very wide ditch you've described, is actually something that is necessary to keep your project safe and keep these homes in the future safe.
Well, I, I definitely think that the ditch serves as conveyance for, for runoff. Historically, everything, as, as you may be aware, everything that we create through subdivision plan and the engineered plant sets, we're, we're capturing all of our runoff and piping it to the appropriate outfall. But the natural grade, you're correct, behind lots sixty-nine to, I think it goes down beyond fifty-seven. I, I would think that this ditch is probably, it's not on our property, but it's, like I said, it runs perpendicular from New Road and then parallel.
Right. So your, your property is deriving benefit from that ditch, even though you don't own it, it will continue to.
Behind these lots, sure. Over here, not so much. You know, the first suggesting, suggestion was you drop a color pipe bottom of the ditch, build it up, so we can extend out our sidewalk area adequate for installation of our sidewalk. Well, that would require approaching the neighbor property owner. Because as I said, our property extends out about eight feet behind our curb. Which is about four feet into this ditch. And there's still a good twelve feet or so remaining. And then it also would create, you know, beyond your sidewalk, you have the, the relief slope, which I think, I can't see two to one. Rather have it just a drop-off behind the sidewalk. So
This won't change the dynamics of the ditch, though, but.
This won't change the dynamics of the ditch, though, but even when you put the, even when you put the rip rap in.
Rip rap. Yes, so rip rap will all be where the sidewalk was proposed. That will now be reinforced with rip rap. Uh, and then the installation of this barricade or or.
Right. So the rip rap line, in fact, will be stabilizing your curb line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
So uh, it would, and it would reinforce the area as it exists today.
Right.
At the top of slope.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a couple of very mature trees that are literally four feet behind that catch basin right now. That serve uh. That definitely serve in reinforcing the.
Right, stabilize that bank.
Correct, right.
Yeah, and those trees will remain standing.
Yes. If the sidewalk is required.
Right, right.
So it's not a through road.
I feel like I'm in a hard spot, haven't you?
It's it's a, it's a neighborhood that I think is not going to be through traffic. You're gonna have kids out there playing in the cul-de-sac, I would suspect. So we 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 propose moving the sidewalk back to where. The homes end and and where traffic would essentially end.
Right, and that's shown on the on the diary, yeah, on the crap, yeah. Right.
Any questions?
So we're ready to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the requested modification. With the cautionary barrier to prevent. Somebody from going over the edge.
Second from Carolyn, so we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need some, you good?
Yep, we're good.
All right, uh, next on the dock, it is I four. This is discussion of possible action regarding a minor subdivision. This is MS two dash twenty two for the lands of Galasso. Uh, located at one uh, one hundred and eleven New Road. The minor subdivision is to create one new parcel of land with a residual parcel, property zone R two. There's anyone to, you want to introduce this one?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So again, as you mentioned, it's for a minor subdivision for the creation of one new parcel. The new parcel is intended to be located off of University Road. So this this again is a through lot, has frontage on both uh New Road and University Drive. The proposed rear half of of the lot is proposed to be subdivided and have access off of the University Drive. As the lot doesn't quite meet um the code requirements for twenty thousand square feet for ten thousand per each. They did, the applicant did go to the board of adjustment and they were granted variances. As the lot depth is supposed to be a hundred feet, the one proposed lot is ninety nine point three eight feet. That was granted and the lot size of nine thousand three hundred and forty two square feet for the for lot B was approved. So the lots, per the board of adjustment, they do meet code. Um, so this is just consideration of the minor subdivision. There is an email from the Board of Public Works stating that they have the ability to serve this property um for utilities. Um, it's not within the floodplain. And I'm, and again, the planning commission did recommend approval of the minor subdivision with a motion of five to zero with three abstentions.
And Janelle, for those abstentions, could you explain? I think there was some um feelings in planning commission about the fact that I had gone to board of adjustment first. So can you just explain to the public what, you know, the the order of things?
So typically, if you have an application that comes before anybody um that doesn't meet code. What we try to do is get that resolved first, because I think the one thing that staff doesn't want to do is to make put. Commission or the planning commission in a position where they are reviewing something that doesn't meet code. So typically, a applications go to the board of adjustment. If they're granted relief, they are granted relief. They move forward. If they are not, then they stop and then they don't have to, then they don't move forward. So that's typically how most places work. You go get your variances first, then you're code compliant, and then you go through your standard process with whatever. Conditional use. In this case, it's a minor subdivision. So two of the members did have concern that they felt that. There wasn't much for them to review because it had already been reviewed by the board of adjustment. But again, the board of adjustment was still. Particularly only looking at bulk dimensions, not regarding the subdivision itself. Um, and then one member did abstain because, again, they had concerns about it. It was a subdivision.
I have a question, Janelle.
Yeah.
When with this subdivision, lot B, is that now considered part of Pilot Town Park?
No, it is not.
It is not.
It is not.
Yeah. But it is not part of that.
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Though it's on university.
Even though it's on university, university is a city street.
Right.
Um, it is not part of the subdivision because, again, the the lots on New Road, the majority of those are actually through lots. So again, two frontages, but none of them are part of that development.
And there's no requirement that they become part of that.
Correct.
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 For HOA purposes or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right.
Mr. Robertson, do you have anything to add?
Hi, Vince Robertson with Park Council here. No.
Nice and short.
But then I'm gonna go back on what I just said. There was a concern also at the planning commission about the precedent this would establish. Uh, I just wanted to point, we really get a chance to address it because it came on their discussions. Really, this was the biggest lot out there. Most of them are a lot thinner. So, you know, I I don't, unless they get. Significant variances from the board of adjustments, which I don't foresee happening. This is a unique property, so.
Right. Is it that Doc Brown house on one eleven? Is that one eleven?
No, that's the corner house that you're speaking of. This is closer to to Pilot Town Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. The the dark one is right at the corner. Yeah. Yeah. That's not this one. It's, yeah, thank you. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, it sounds like uh, Mr. Counselperson Richard is ready to make a motion.
Okay, I I'd like to make a motion that the council approves the minor subdivision to create uh one new parcel of land with a residual parcel. And the tax map is three three five dash four point one eight dash seven five point zero zero.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Maybe a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All good? Okay. Um, next one. Uh, we were, yeah, we've uh stricken I five, so that will take us to I six, which um. This is a presentation possible action on development of a procedure document. The one that we put on there was as an example is one from Fenwick Island. And um, I'll introduce this one. The idea with this is um. You know, we do our Robert's rules and we have certain procedures that we follow and and such. I think sometimes as new council people or even from the public, you know, sort of understanding, you know, the difference between certain types of meetings or, you know, when things have to be posted or or those kinds of things. So uh, as evidenced by Fenwick Island's uh procedure document, there are other municipalities do have these types of um sort of process to file a document. So what I was gonna propose here is uh maybe if it's agreeable to council meeting, it's maybe just to put this on a future workshop and use this as a means of sort of introducing this. Perhaps there are some processes and procedures that we do have that are outlined for us as council people that we can include as part of our discussion. But my thought is maybe to put this on a future workshop and work up our own sort of Lewis specific uh meeting procedures.
I think it's a great idea. I I read through the the procedures and it does offer some interesting. Uh, ways to move forward in terms of efficiency and dealing with issues and organization. So I fully support that.
Okay.
Are you looking for a motion for this?
I don't know that we need that. If we're gonna put it on a future workshop, I think I just wanted the one also to have you you for uh the the team here aware and be thinking about it, but also the public. You know, have some input in terms of, you know, what would you need clarification on? So I'd use the one that we have in there as a as a sort of a proxy. It talks about, you know, what's there's doing a a public meeting and a public hearing, and it talks about it. You know, when things get posted and and things like that. So be be thinking about that when we do put this on a workshop for your your contributions on that. So um, I think we'll leave it at that and just have it move on to a future workshop. We're good with that? Okay, so moving right along then. Uh, the last uh. Issue for our for our agenda items is I seven, which is a presentation possible action on a resolution to authorize. Uh, the Lewis Board of Public Works to borrow funds through the state revolving loan fund for water and sewer expansion to serve Donovan Smith uh manufactured home. Um, and before we go, I I did want the um, the public to note today, we did, we did go to a process you'll see on our agenda of uh. Sort of sponsoring or or endorsing uh an agenda item. And this one, for example, we had some that were labeled LPC. And in this case, this one's labeled BPW. So that's part of this procedures going forward is that there should be for agenda items. We'll start to have council members endorse those where it's sort of statutory. Um, in in this case, where BPW needs uh. Can't borrow money on their own, apparently. Uh, we'll note that that. So hopefully that will also provide some um, some transparency to the public in terms of where some of these agenda items are are uh coming from here. So um, and and Mary, do I just give it a sort of a, um, you know, again, why this is on here, what this will trigger next for us, just for people's benefit?
So so these um loans are the loans um for BPW to move forward from, again, from Denrec and Office of Drinking Water. For BPW to move forward with the um sewer and water installation at Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park. They are loan documents, but they um include principal forgiveness. So it's set up as a loan, and as long as the conditions of the loan are met. The the principal will be forgiven, so there will be no payback. As as the mayor stated, the the charters specify that in order for the the Board of Public Works to um borrow money. The city of Lewis has to pass a resolution. So this is two resolutions. One for the clean water state revolving fund and one for the drinking water um state revolving fund loan.
So do we need to accept these as two separate resolutions? So we need a motion for?
I typically we do them as two two separate, don't necessarily, but yeah.
Okay, any questions on these or?
I actually do have some questions.
Sure.
Thank you. I'll be real quick. Uh, when I'm in a very broad way, I am troubled by um. The fact that we are having to, I understand the fact that the BPW cannot borrow money. And I understand that we only can authorize that. I understand that. I know that from having read code, okay? Or our charter. Uh, what what concerns me here is that we end up with. I feel an encumbrance here being placed upon the city when, in fact. We are not party to the agreement that the BPW entered into with these two government departments and the property owner. And uh, this is. We have four months ago, we were involved in a hearing, we have, and we moved to annex. This community into the city. And that was made effective immediately. Members of that community voted in our elections. And yet, this document, these two documents that are before us for consideration and for my signature are perspective. They they suggest that um annexation has not taken place. And I'm wondering with a, I'm trying to manage my resentment here. What was all that noise about four months ago, five months ago, that forced us into making the decisions we made? When, in fact, these resolutions suggest that annexation will take place once we pass this resolution. And again, it seems to me that the city is incurring some kind of obligation here. We have some kind of obligation here. As um. As passing these resolutions, our obligation would be represented in the in the form of the loan that is being granted. And.
The loans from the from the state.
Right, but the loan, it can only be an accepted if we pass this resolution.
It doesn't show on our books. The only, the only debt from BPW that shows on our books is back when we did the bond, right? Some of the older. Right. Older fund.
And I I guess, how do we not put this on the books if, in fact, it is an obligation, if we have exposure here? For the next couple of years while the project is being constructed. Because, in fact, it's it's all dependent upon the property owner, who's also not listed here, fulfilling his obligations.
So the way I view the charter provision requiring or giving the city oversight as to loans made to BPW is more of a checks and balance. This is your opportunity to say. You can argue what the relationship is between the city and the BPW, but this is an opportunity for the city to say. We think this is a good idea. We don't think it's a good idea, but they, the BPW cannot go forward without this lending, without this check and balance happening before city council this evening. The annexation portion of it, you know, the binding commitment letter that was given to the BPW. Made annexation a requirement, or at least an annexation agreement or requirement of this financing going forward. You've already checked that box and done the annexation, so that part's done. It, the resolution does suggest in some ways that it's part of this.
In some ways, it's how it's written.
You can, you can quit. Well, there's no need for an annexation agreement here because they were, they were adjacent, you were able to annex them already. So that that I did pick up on that when I read the resolutions the first time. It didn't give me any real need for concern. But if the if the concern is that somehow the city is being encumbered. Financially, or you have some, you bear some responsibility for these loans. I don't think you do. I think it's purely, this is a checks and balance that you're able to take a look at the loan and say, this is a good borrowing opportunity for BPW, or it's a bad borrowing opportunity for BPW. And you can, you have the authority of city council to say they may go forward or they cannot go forward.
Well, this was clarified with the MOU and and all that at the beginning.
That was all, that was all part of it in in many ways, but as far as the resolutions do, you're not, you're not taking on any debt obligation if you if you approve these tonight.
Charlie.
Yeah, that's. And maybe give you a little satisfaction is that when we apply for these loans, they're actually BPW revenue backed loans. They're not tax revenue backed loans. They're BPW revenue backed loans, and it's clearly noted as such in the applications, and I'm assuming on the loan documents. So it doesn't really, I don't think it encumbers the city because it's BPW revenue that's back in the loans.
Not pledging the full.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have more questions? Go ahead.
Well. Glenn, have you had a chance to review this resolution?
I reviewed the resolution.
Okay, but you did not prepare it, did you?
I did not prepare, no.
You feel like it's in order?
I do.
Okay, so let's let's hear this in two separate motions, as Glenn suggested. So the first one is the for the uh. This one, the first one is for.
Let me just read the title, mayor. So the first one is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Lewis, Delaware, approving the city of Lewis Board of Public Works plan. To borrow two million seven hundred and forty two thousand one hundred and forty six dollars from the Delaware Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund. Acting by and through the Delaware Department of Natural Resources and and Environmental Control for the purpose of financing the Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park project. So we have motion to approve the resolution, adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to approve that resolution as read by city solicitor.
We got a motion. We got a second?
Yes.
And does any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Okay, now.
Second one, mayor, is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Lewis, Delaware, approving the city of Lewis Board of Public Works plan to borrow two million eight hundred and sixty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars. From the Delaware Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, acting by and through the Delaware Department of Health and Social Services. Division of Public Health for the purpose of financing the Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park project.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as currently read by the city solicitor.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second from uh Tim. All in favor?
I.
Hi. Okay, um, so folks, that gets us to the end of our agenda. We do have um. On on uh our agenda, public comment. So before. On, on, uh, our agenda, public comment, so before we get to, uh. Aaron from the press, is there anyone first on the virtual that might want to pop a question, just raise your hand? And if not, um, we'll make the same. Okay. Anyone from the public? Rick? Please introduce seven, just your address there.
Good evening, Rick, four, seventy East Marcus Street. Public comment. I come here tonight. Because I want to speak on record, the process. Of the acquisition of potential acqui- acquisition of two or three Savannah Road. Was not disgusted at the outcome, but I had enormous disdain for the process. Before I get into that, I want Mr. Mandelus to put on record that it did not require a referendum. To prove, to possibly approve the, a purchase of this site by the, by the council.
Part of the agenda is for public comment, for them to receive it, I, I will put on the record that a referendum was not required, but this is generally just for them to hear, to comment.
That's for the record. My disdain. And it's absolute. This Kabuki Theater never had the votes. Never had the votes. And I, from the very beginning. I went out on a limb. From the very beginning, I went out on a limb. And the process was disgusting. I applaud the people in a viewpoint, the Friday, the Monday, the Friday before, to stand up, show up and speak up. And they did. Seventeen out of twenty two public comments were for, that's seventy seven percent. People were telling me that we're at the public hearing, four out of five people, that's eighty percent. What you guys effectively did as a council. This is Tom, don't bother. Just stay home. Now, I'm going to ask a question here, but none of you are going to answer because it's a public comment. Has everybody up here read the comp plan? Tim, I think you referenced it in your November. You can read it, go back, look at it. And that comp plan, how many times does this say, it goes, that's over with, I'm done with that. Now, I addressed the next day. What is the town prepared to do to address Alaska Avenue and Cedar Street Extension? Now refer to the comp plan. Have you read it, Ms. Jones? Mr. Richard, have you read it? Mr. Wims, you read it? Mr. Saliba, you read it? Ms. Vassella, have you read it?
Yes.
How many times does it say incentivize the commercial property owners on the B side of town? How many times does it say in that comp plan? In all my six years. Because we're moving on to the next stage. No one. Past or present. Has reached out. No one. So I'm asking this council tonight, and I am firm, what are the incentives you're going to offer us? What incentives? Is that in your comp plan, am I misreading it? Am I misreading the comp plan?
Are you, what, what's your purpose, Rick?
I'm angry. I'm angry because you wasted people's time.
Okay, we, we understand and we got that, Rick, and we understand, we, we hear.
Well, I hope the next time there's public hearings, you listen to the public.
Thanks, Rick.
Before we, before we get to Aaron, is there, I'll, I'll leave a, another shot for folks who are on. Or anyone in the public. Okay, Aaron, do you? Do you have a question, come on up.
So I wanted to play off of Kim's earlier point, actually, um, and it was, uh, something I was wondering, because it's something that was on two agenda items tonight, um, and it was crossed off of one. But the parking issue, um, and I come from Ocean View, Delaware, um, so I grew up in Bethany Beach, and they issue, um, I know it was referred to here. As, uh, hanging tags, um, but we call them parking permits. And anytime I've been in this room, uh, and the subjects of permits have been brought up, that's been a quick no. But I was wondering if there was going to be any kind of discussion about parking permits? And if there wasn't going to be any discussion about parking permits? How does the city plan to tackle the parking issue in different areas of Lewis? Because it is distinctly different in the historic district compared to the beach. Um, I was particularly, I was at twelve Kentucky Avenue today, um, and it's, I, I, I struggled to park there myself. So I was just wondering if, uh, parking permits for residents might be on the table? Or if there would be different parking regulations for different areas of the city? Or if this was going to be continued to be done on a, um, case by case basis?
So we. We took, back in February. Staff took the recommendations from the most recent beach parking committee, it was actually the prior February. Okay, right, gosh, time flies. February of twenty one, we took the recommendations of the. Beach Parking Committee that concluded, um, that January. And we started to kind of work through them and try to figure out how we could begin to, to develop a. Parking permit system for the beach. There are many issues and many challenges, so. We had, um, a workshop in January of twenty two. The days are twenty two.
No, it was, it was, it was twenty twenty two, January nineteen, January nineteen.
The years are running together. And, and then, and then we brought recommendations to Mayor and Council in March. And, um. And then there, or in February, and then there was a hearing in March, and then council took action in March. And where we got with this, the, the. Designated parking for the residents with no off-street parking is really an interim measure while we further. Explore how we would manage a permit program. We received hundreds of comments, um, that we only recently finished categorizing. So once this parking season is, I say parking season, but yes, that, once the summer season's over. We will go back to that list now that we've got it compiled in a digestible way. And we will begin to, to kind of try to make sense of it and figure out. How best to address the comments that we received and. Whether that can be done in the context of a parking permit program for the beachside. We previously had parking committees for the beach and parking committees for the downtown area. The, the, both of them had two iterations, and both iterations of the permit or of the parking committee for downtown. Came with the final recommendation not to pursue a permit program. I don't think that means that's how it's going to be forever, that was based on that period in time. But one thing we have learned in trying to work through it on the beach side is. It's, it's a heavy lift, so it's probably better to do one and work the kinks out and then figure out how we extend it.
Okay.
That would be my, is that, I, I only speak.
That's our current state of.
I, I, I speak kind of as the administrative person, not.
And then, uh, kind of to follow up on that, but also something that the city's working with right now. Ground cover in the right of way, is that going to play a part in granting off-street parking? Like if someone kind of has a situation going on where perhaps that they could have some parking, but they have some ground cover in that right of way? Is that something that, uh, council members might consider before granting a parking pass?
It's part of the work.
Yeah, I think we'll talk about that at our next workshop.
Yeah, that's at our workshops.
But since you brought it up, and we still have a few people out there. We do have an online form that people can get to from our homepage, from the news and announcements. Where they can go on and indicate what they believe the, um, appropriate ground cover. Choices would be for each of the three contexts we've discussed, but the space between the sidewalk and the curb. Behind the curb when there's no sidewalk, and then in the areas where there's neither sidewalk nor a curb.
Okay, um, and then I, I just have two more, um, and I. To go on with what Councilman Richard's concerns I believe were. It seems that the residents of Donovan Smith have had a history with the park owner of failing to follow through on his obligations. If the park owner were to fail to follow through on his obligations, is there any kind of liability for the city of Lewis or for the BPW? If the park owner were to fail to follow through on his obligations?
So, this one that I probably don't feel comfortable commenting on, because you all know there's different players involved, so I think I'd rather just pass on that question.
Okay, that's why, and then, um, so my final question. I don't mean to laugh at this, is there a reason why the town of Fenwick was chosen for the guide? Or was that just pulled because, uh, two council members resigned from there and the town manager, and so I.
I asked the same question.
They have one and they're in, they're, they're a coastal town, that's really.
That's what I thought. Okay, because I, I do believe that some of the reports on the city of Lewis that this is a model city for, uh, civic operations, so.
We, we have that information in our own orientation package, it's just a matter of looking at what we have and what someone else has and sort of seeing. Make it better or whatever. It could have been Bethany.
Okay, all right, just, just wondering why I was.
Aaron, I will circle back on one thing, you, with respect to Donovan Smith, in terms of enforcement, that we, it will be part of the workshop, is the, the potential development of. A fee schedule for code violations, which we currently don't have.
Right.
And it's can, can be difficult to enforce code if you don't have some kind of stick. So. That's something we will discuss, and that may help with some of the, you know, the code violations that may be occurring there.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Good workshop.
Well, we usually give the, the press the last voice, but if anyone has other comments, otherwise, um, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I forgot about that. So, yeah, can I get a motion to resume, um, our previously. Our previous, uh, executive session? We do, we have a couple. Second, got a motion, I got a, a second, all in favor? Okay, so unfortunately.